Good afternoon, everybody. Again, if you're watching this, you're watching our in our recession of the Board of Selectmen's meeting, trying to deal with all issues COVID and as typical, we probably want to start with our COVID update first. I'm going to ask our Board of Health agent to chime in, if you will.
We've had three new confirmations in town. Two of which were in the same household. And there were also two mask people in food establishments. So if I follow that one. What are the recommendations that we should have out there? We've got a couple cases now. The 2-1-1 number that the state is set up for epidemiology can block anybody or anyone who might have a question as to whether they are a contact or if they're not a contact. Who on earth will pass the part? Who has the issue with it? They're the epidemiologists. They're the experts as to what has to happen. And they'll provide accurate and very quick guidance for everybody. So I think that came out at the very beginning of this and probably sort of fell off the table. And I just like to reiterate that. So that thing was there for anybody or for everybody.
All right. So with school starting and the possibility that somebody has either somebody works in the school or somebody's a student or somebody in the household gets it with a student. We didn't really have a policy in place to contact the schools before because they were shut down. So I guess, I know that you contact both chiefs. Can we contact the superintendent to ask them to do a search of the address? The new addresses that come in to see if there's any registered students? So the school can move them to full remote? Well, so the guy
That just came out. I mean, I've been reading through extensively. I thought there were a form. So they would reach out to me if they thought they wanted the school to be closed.
So I guess it's not the closure that I'm asking about. That it's like if there's somebody, you get a new address, you get my address. I test positive. I have a student at my address. How does the school know from the town that to check that address? To see if there's students at that address?
That does not really matter. Not even touch with the school nurse.
So you contact the school nurse? And she does the address check to see if there's any students there?
Well, she's routinely contacted both by me and my contact traces. So I would tip a lot because I would know, you know, know the address anyway.
So I guess the question is, do you know if there's students that go to Halifax or Silver Lake when you look at that address?
If they're from Halifax and they take the age of 13 to 15 years of high school. So they're one of the two schools.
Okay.
So walk it through. Okay. We, you've know you, all you're getting at the first level is the person who has the confirmed case.
Yes.
Then we start asking, who else is in the household? Who finds out who else is in the household? Who finds out whether these people are either employees or students at Halifax Elementary or Silver Lake? And then who contacts the school to follow up? And so the school initiates what it needs to do in terms of protocols.
The VNA, the Visiting Nurse Association, that tick box that does. So those from Maven, which is the reporting system, from the doctor to Maven. And then from Maven to our contact tracing P. And then they reach out to the school.
Okay. And how long should that take?
Well, it's all started at the first piece. How fast did the doctor get it into Maven? And how quickly did Maven get it into their system? And how quickly, the VNA is actually pretty damn quick. So once it finally comes down from Maven's resource and subtracting, it moves along very quickly. But those first two steps seem to be the most time lagging.
So without specifics. There was a, so there's a question. There was new guidance that came out from DESI on the 14th that said that anybody that's exposed needs to quarantine and needs to be transitioned immediately to remote classes for at least two weeks. So I guess
By exposed?
Well, so that the term is, I don't know what the actual term
The actual term in the DESI guidelines, okay, is a close contact is somebody who has been within six feet of somebody for a period of 15 minutes. Now, you could, the accumulation of 15 minutes wouldn't be enough, a couple, five minutes. If you were together, if they were in school for eight hours and that person was 15 minutes side by side, uh, 10 minutes side by side with somebody. And then a couple hours later, another 10 minutes side by side with that somebody, you'd probably consider that the 15 minutes.
So if there, if it's students on a soccer field playing or practicing and they're within the distance or baseball or softball, the guidance that we got was the whole team needs to be quarantined. As of 8:31 last night, the whole team needs to be quarantined and be transitioned to remote school for two weeks.
And I think that the guidance that we got last night was not only does the team have to, but their siblings
Siblings as well.
And the guidance that was directed by DPH this morning, after having reached out in 2-1-1 number, said in fact it was just the team that had been done and not the siblings. So again, we have two factions running the COVID experience. The school has their set, you know, of DESI guidelines. And DPH also has this other guidelines. But the school ultimately takes the call. So if the school wants to react and go for abundance precaution, then they would say yes, the siblings should.
Okay. And if we had at Silver Lake, for instance, or someplace else, a child that was positive, is the DESI guideline then to say the entire classroom, so classroom 522 needs to be quarantined for two weeks? Or is it something else in a sense of whether that includes the teacher for that matter? I would think if the students are in the same class as another student and we're going to quarantine them, the teacher would probably have to be quarantined also. So what's the guide, as of the most recent, what are we being told that the school should be doing?
So the guidance that I saw, and I don't know if this is the guidance from the 14th or if this changed because I've been in negotiation meetings for the past three days. So the guidance that I saw was if three or more positives come back, the whole school is shut down.
Okay.
But up until that point, I believe it's just taken that on a class by class basis. But it's different.
A classroom, so if one or two cases, those classrooms go to quarantine. Everybody else follows their normal schedule.
But it's different at the high school because the kids actually move class rooms versus the elementary school is classroom contained.
Right.
Junior high is pod contained. High school is not contained. So I guess maybe I can talk to you offline and just go over that real quick.
Absolutely. And then it was interesting too, because I had a case reported to me that wasn't out of the making system yet, that they went to the schools here. I don't know if Silver Lake or if it was Halifax. But as it turns out, that part, why I never bought it is because that person's residence is actually Plymouth. So Plymouth was handling the case unbeknownst to me. And I don't know why they go to school here unless
Well, so there's, if somebody's homeless and was going to Halifax, they're allowed to continue to go to Halifax. So I thought that that was more of a Kingston issue because I thought Kingston was the shelter, but I don't know.
Depends on where the shelter is.
So I guess we can talk after this.
Plymouth Coalition for the Homeless is located over Route 80 over there. I think it's in, it's on the border, it's on the cusp between Plymouth and Kingston.
Yeah. And that does happen too. You know, we've had instances way along power lines where they're really Halifax. And it's with Kinston. So either I get the information and I'm supposed to, or they get the information and I'm supposed to. It's not a follow system.
Sometimes it has to do with dual parenting. I think you started to touch on that earlier. You have two parents that may be separated. As long as one of the parents still lives in the community, the child typically has the option. Especially at Silver Lake, most people want their kids to finish out their high school experience with the people that they've come along with the whole way. So any number of things could be in play.
On the school air test, I don't know if you received a copy of that yet or not from Matt?
No, I have. I did spend a significant amount of time with Matt.
This one?
Okay. And a significant amount of time on the phone with the indoor air quality specialist from DPH.
Okay. So we have still about 25 classrooms that do not meet the six turnovers of air per hour? So
Where are the six hours? How was, is that mandated? Is that CDC? Is that environmental quality? Where are we coming up with the six?
It's an actuary guideline of recommended terms for every room.
So from what I understand, it's a DESI guideline to meet the six air refreshes per hour? That they, that they were pointing to that and the A, M, C?
I read that in DESI. I read it in actuary.
Yeah, I was going to say.
The only thing that I read in DESI, and it was set up in a hierarchy of order, was if you step, you scale. He's showing the members. Personal protective equipment. Now, this is how to prevent COVID. After you, personal protective equipment, then you want to make sure that there's social distancing. People staying away from one another. Then we're going to make sure that everybody washes their hands and has your ID if you have to cough at the screen. And then coming down last on the list was proper ventilation. Now, one of the things in DESI's ventilation, it mandates that if you can open a window, open a window, okay? When they test for turnovers in a room, their test specifications do not allow that window to be opened. So even if you let a window that's testing alone to a degree, once you open that window, they threw the numbers to the ceiling. But he can't report that because it's not on his paperwork. Because I asked him to do it for me, just to see what the effect, what the effect of a window fan blowing out in a window being loaded would be. And he can't substantiate that on paper because it's not out of this inspection. This inspection is what the window's supposed to be.
That defies common sense to do the inspections with windows open. I mean, there's no way that's going to be an accurate meeting.
So, and then it's even with DPH, there's the reason why we do the terms or why they did the terms in a room is mostly for carbon dioxide and for any kind of volatile substances, you know, VOCs. But there is a degree of contamination that will come out of the air as you turn a room. So it is helpful. When, but certain buildings are so old or equipment might be so old that they really can't hit certain specifications, which doesn't, if they're not working at all, but that would probably be an unsafe condition. But if they're working at a lower level, the objective is to do the maintenance and repair work that will get it to a level where it will be where you'd really like to see it. Also depends on the calibrations. VOCs are moving, so even though six is the number that they give you, and much the same when you do sanitize the solution test in a store. There's a range you can play with, you know? It's just common sense, you know? It might be a little higher, someone's might blow it out of the water. Others might be a little bit lower. But then once you start to get past a threshold, which basically he thought would be around maybe four and a half. You really want to take a good hot stuff and make that the number one. Or if you have a two, make that the number one unit you work on. Make that the number two unit to work on and work your way through. But once again, he said that the air guidelines, what were designed for DESI and without DPH, he was going to be the big hole that he would avoid with us.
Okay. So I have a request from the school to purchase, it's from Matt. There's 52 spaces that have teachers in them with or without students. I don't know the number that, because they could be not just classrooms. The kids could be moved in for specialists or interventionals. So the request is for 52 air purifiers at $820 per unit from the school committee, well, from the school.
Is this for the elementary school?
For the elementary school.
Sandy, we don't have that at this point, right?
That's not, and hasn't been requested yet?
No, 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 but I don't even know that we have, I mean, do, what, if everything that everybody asks for is submitted and approved by the 30th, what's our balance right now?
Right now, I think that one's 134,000.
So it's 42,640 plus shipping.
All right. My concern, 42,000 what?
42,640 plus shipping.
My concern is more, I don't know if you guys watch the news, but there is, I think it's low, couldn't open a certain number of their schools because their air purifiers have not arrived. So because their air purifiers have not arrived, my concern is that there is a lot of people looking for these and they don't be able to get them.
So we, so Matt has eight right now that came through Kingston that he lent to Halifax for the worst performing rooms so that those teachers would be in those rooms as of today. I think if we work with the staff over there to say that we've ordered them and if there's, the issue is, is the issue ends up being that we can't, we can't say that the students will be six feet apart because if somebody requires a change from the remote or somebody moves in, we can't. Because basically each classroom is at the max of the six students right now. So in order to add somebody to a classroom, you have to decrease the size of the distance between them. So, and we have no, we have, even though we asked everybody to sign that document to say that they will stay for the first semester, it's, it's an agreement between everyone, but it's not enforceable. So if somebody has to change their mind or somebody's job changes or something, it's not enforceable. So I think that this would alleviate concerns over that if the Board of Selectmen would approve that purchase.
So what my recommendation would be is that if you cannot get KERS funding for it, if it doesn't have any time to qualify for KERS funding, that the school be able to assume it in the budget.
Okay. I don't know if we have that money in the budget.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the alternative is. But we're going to end up having to settle up sooner or later. Anything that KERS doesn't pay for, which we still have questions on a lot of things, but also anything that's not here by, I want to say December 19, I can't get the information into, for the county fast enough to have them have a check cut to us so that they, they don't have delivery.
See, if they do the PO like you were talking before though.
But it doesn't, so it doesn't matter. Right now, they're saying we have to have checks cut by October 2nd. We can cut checks on things that we know will be here. We cannot cut checks on something that you have no guarantee will be delivered before, in, I say mid-December.
Yeah, and the mid-December is assuming that even with delivery, that will get reimbursed. Now, Plymouth's going to have another Zoom meeting on Monday, immediately after the Selectmen's meeting on Monday for an update. We'll get, maybe get some direction both on money available this month and then money available the next three months.
Now, on the air purifiers, instead of, they have to be a filter in them, I would imagine.
So the one, I talked to Matt about that. The ones that he bought have the filters that can be cleaned with a vacuum and a blower outside. And they're not, you don't have to buy new filters. It's one filter for the unit, and that's why he went with the ones that he picked.
But does Matt have a shipping date at this?
He is on the phone with them right now, trying to get it for me.
I do know the ones that he picked up or finally bought, he almost had to drive to West Virginia.
He had somebody get them and drive them here.
They probably brought them up to us, so they have a very good idea. We also have to be careful when you're using those in that sometimes if they have something that solves a problem and can actually create a problem. Because it came up on my call yesterday. One of the, where the teacher had placed it, it was actually from where it was wrong in the air, it was bringing the toxins across before it got to the air purifier and she was sitting in the middle of it.
Okay.
So placement of the unit here is going to be critical as well as the actual use of it. Because he brought that specific kind of a heparin filter. Because I've had instances where the diaportation was the solution until they were in like the person was right in the line of the air before this new purifier.
Okay. I don't know how you place it in a room and not have that happen. Somebody's going to be a direct guy.
They, I guess there's pros and cons to the air purifier. I can't find the revolution we have to have.
This just keeps on getting better.
If we approve this, are we obligated to go through with it? If KERS money doesn't come through?
If they purchase them and KERS money does not pay for them, then yes, we are on the hook. And that's why I said. I'm not sure if we're involved in a lot of these purchases. We're not sure what KERS money is going to end up paying for or not. Anything that KERS money doesn't pay for that we've already purchased, we're on the hook to pay for that. Where we get the money to do that, I mean, some of the items, we might, you might have a huge chunk of our free cash next year. I don't know. So that's why I said, do they have it in the budget if they don't?
Well, I, I think the only reason that we're looking to buy the air purifiers is COVID. There's no reason to purchase them otherwise. So I don't see how that wouldn't be a reimbursement.
I don't think that would be even, but
It's, it seems like you're right. I mean, if anything would qualify for COVID purchase, I would think those
It's just getting, like I said, the air purifiers, I'm more worried about getting them by December.
He's, he's talking to them right now. He's texting me. So I said, get me the delivery date.
Well, do you want to give a contingency on this or what do you want to do?
I think that makes the most sense. Contingent upon being able to receive them by, what, mid-December? Is that what we're talking?
Yeah. I would say in December, just say December 15th. That way we have time to process the voices and
Or I'll drive to West Virginia to pick them up? Is that what you're saying?
Well, does it, does it make sense for us to put off the decision on that?
I think, I think if you, if you guys
We'll have a caravan down to West Virginia.
You know, acting as the school committee chairman, I would request you approve it with the contingency so that I can bring that back. So that the, that the staff at the elementary school knows that we're trying to make sure that everything at their building with the system in place right now is trying to be worked on.
In the meantime, I'm assuming we're evaluating the equipment that we've got. Is that safe to say that we're looking at things that aren't working properly? That we're going to tweak them and make them work as efficiently as possible? You brought up the point earlier, Bob, that some of this aging equipment or older equipment maybe is more accurate. Probably were never designed for that many air change exchanges anyway. So, you know, trying to optimize them at this point would at least be some remediation to what we've got going on.
So what sort of things, the question is, can it be done?
Yeah, right, both.
Is it possible?
Because I'll guarantee you that when that equipment was installed originally, it was never intended for that, with the exception of the new part of the building.
It is the old part of the building that's the issue.
My question is, is the machines that you're wanting will be adequate enough to fill the size of the room, purify it?
I believe that that was part of Matt's.
Now, when, and when these guidelines is set up, they're also set up with certain occupancy within each room. And so like in this room, if it was to become over private, they would recommend if you could turn it up so that you get more air exchanges. I would think conversely, I can see the right. If you have less people in the room, you probably don't need quite as many air exchanges.
Yeah, but somebody, you'd have to, you'd have to be monitoring that constantly. I don't know whether we have that capacity to.
And I'm not sure that that number six was, or you know, whichever number we picked, was designed for COVID environment. No, it was, COVID wasn't around in that. So who knows if, I'm sure that they're doing the air testing, you know, as we speak. And they might come up with a number that says, oh my God, you know? Six, no, there needs to be 200 of these. So you, you end up like, I don't know.
Well, all, all the schools in the last 15 years have been designed for safety. Not safety being from outside coming in. Now, this is inside going out.
Yeah, I, one of the questions I always have Matt ask is whether or not Yeah, I, I, one of the questions I always have Matt ask is whether or not what size room, what capacity these machines can cover before we order it and find out if they're not adequate.
Are the kids going to be required to wear their masks all day in school?
So the, the, the current policy that was read at the school committee was K through 1, we're strongly encouraged. But we didn't actually vote that policy, so it's up to the principal's policy at this point. And the principal is requiring everyone to wear a mask at all times.
Because that'll affect.
It will affect so much.
Yeah.
Because as I said, hierarchy, that's the very first step.
Right. Well, I, 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 my thought process is we approve the purchase pending commitment of delivery by the 15th of December. Are contingent upon that. I, I, I mean, because if it comes in afterwards, do we still need them? I, I.
Well, we'll probably still need them, but we'll be on the hook unless the federal aid changes in one way or another.
Well, I'll make their motion.
I have to recuse because I'm bringing to you the school committee.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Recuse.
And we'll see how it plays out here.
So on the.
Bob, you had emailed me.
I'm sorry.
You had emailed me in the chief's yesterday about two of them. I take it the third one is a new one since last night?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
That's in progress. Same house. It's a mother and a daughter.
Now, this is exposure, not necessarily confirmed?
No, they were confirmed.
They were confirmed.
The, the mother just goes, had, had just, you know, been in the hospital and was routine to, to check for that. It was like, all great, no problems, but tested father. It was a fluke if she had not been in there. She would have, would have gone for a test.
All right, move on. Chief of Verus, anything?
Park and Lot today went, I think, pretty well. We had a bunch of 60 cars there today. Give or take had one for maybe under six. I think it's going to, you know, we added, we added, we kind of like I said, we added like with the third lane, almost 30 cars off the street. So I know it was full. It was pretty full today. So definitely seemed to work, work well.
Well, then the opposite will happen. We'll see how it works this afternoon.
Right.
And that's with only half the students, right?
Exactly.
And this is one half. The other tests will be Monday, Tuesday with the other half of students.
See how many of them drop off.
So are they going to be in class for the next three days?
So that cohort.
They started yesterday, right?
So they say they were remote. Yes, everyone was remote yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Now you have cohort B is in the school Thursday, Friday with cohort A at home. On Monday, Tuesday cohort A will be at the building, cohort B will be remote.
Okay, thanks.
It'll, it'll be interesting.
Yeah, the buses were empty for most part. They have 10 buses. They dropped off and I think probably 15 kids, the most along the bus. A couple buses had, maybe happened to some kids in the bus. Yeah, I mean, it was, it was pretty smooth. Kids, some kids looked happy with it, other kids, people looked unhappy with it.
Well, I know, I helped send off one this morning that wasn't looking too happy.
Yeah. We had one kid show up at like 8:00 o'clock. He was all excited. He was right there and they had to kick him out of school.
Because he was there before he was 15.
Can't come, come back later.
John, do you want to mention the request that I sent you?
Yeah, yes, please.
So I sent up a child, Charlie and Sandy three requests that were included in the, my included in the total, you had already adopted. The first one was just PPE kits that EMS officer was putting together for each member. They had, already had the correct size, fitting Tyvek suit and N95 mask, et cetera. That was a thousand.
The kit, when you say the kits, these are not the materials, these are the bags or these?
Yes, he's buying the bags and we're putting the kit together with material that we already got. So the total cost of that was 11, 1132 dollars. And then we were notified by OEMS that there was, that all in-person continuing education was prohibited because of COVID-19. So the products had to go off and purchase online. Subscrib-, subscriptions for each person to do their, maybe 48 hours of continuing education, but it all has to be done online now. So we found a company, Product GMS, that's doing it for $100 per person, which seemed like the most, we had three quotes out of the, by Froggy Best and it seemed to have the best product. But that for 26 subscriptions for that was $2,600. And then the third request was a large one. It's a cardiac monitor for the community paramedic vehicle. We currently have two ALS ambulances, two monitors. We don't have one available for that. One of the problems that we run into now is when we have to have one service, we don't even have a spare to put on the end. So we have to drop a level of that ambulance while it's up being serviced. The, it is on a capital plan for 2023. We had already had that on our capital plan to be replaced. So if we're able to get it to the county, funding that will come off. But the cost line is $30,000.
Are these all anticipated to be covered?
I believe, yeah, I can't, I mean, all, all of these, I can cite plenty of examples of other communities that have bought them.
I, I just want to make mention of it while we're on.
Yes.
Can I entertain a motion?
You can entertain it.
Or, or an entertaining motion. Either way, I'd like to have something entertaining.
I moved a lot of purchases of equipment that's been requested by the fire chief.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Moving on.
The only thing I have is I'll be dropping off the invoice a few times to Sandy, hopefully by tomorrow or Monday, the latest, so you'll have the. So we hit the big deadline for last week, those injury, right, the, the assignment was.
All right. I did provide the board with some information from Scott. What, Scott and Bert Gainer met with me earlier today about the Ford F250 pickup and the, which is the first item on that list there. And then the trailer, which I believe, oh, someplace here is the trailer.
It's on the bottom paragraph.
Okay, yep, okay. You know, I've submitted it to Plymouth Cares for determination as to whether this is going to be reimbursable. He, when I talked to Scott and Bert, they were asked that the board approve them at risk in essence. That the town, they understand that the town would have to pay for these if they weren't reimbursed. I mean, the other materi-, the other items he was asking about, the foggers and the respirators and everything, I don't see that being, any of that being a problem. You know, the additional material for the tent so they can keep heat inside the tent as we get into the fall. I don't see, those should be reimbursable. My concern is that we're talking in terms of the amount, close to $50,000 between the truck and the trailer. And those, given what I've heard at various times from Tom O'Brien, are more questionable. I'm not saying they're not legitimate, I think they are, but I have concerns about making a commitment this month. And then, you know, having, telling Scott, go ahead, you know, order these and then finding out whether it's next week or two weeks later or whatever, or even when we actually send in for the reimbursement, that, nope, sorry. As I said, I think I mentioned earlier, there'll be another meeting from the Plymouth Cares on Monday. We should have more information. Either Sandy or I will be able to attend one way or the other and we'll get more information as to what the situation is for the September funding, but also the funding for the next three months.
Is it, is it too late to add something to this list?
It's never too late, but the change, you know, there's two, basically two stages of challenge. One is, can we get an invoice or whatever before, in time to get it shut, cut, in time to get it to Plymouth?
Yeah, fine.
Um, that's, that's our challenge at this point. I mean, this was on the list that you have right now, yes?
I don't have a price for the trailer.
Okay, yeah, I think, because I think he sent that in later. It was $9,200. I just haven't heard from Tom O'Brien yet.
Yeah, I've been trying him for three days and have not been able to get a call back.
So.
And you want us to take it up now? You want to wait?
Well, yes. Bert and Scott asked me to bring this to the board to get a, yet, because I think they're worried that if they wait longer, that these will not be available. Even, you know, and I said to them, look, we're going, you know, if we're at risk for anything we're at risk. I think it's, I think it's part of the Bureau of Accounts, they said two or three years was that we, for the COVID. Basically, the, the idea was, even before the CARES Act money, was that almost everybody declared an emergency. Okay, under that, you still eventually have to come up with the money. I mean, you can't just simply write checks. Either you end up going to town meeting for the appropriation to cover everything you've spent or you take it off on the recap. Basically, start off with $25 million. If you have $100,000 of emergency expenses, whether it's hurricane or COVID, that weren't reimbursable, you take that off the top. That gets first priority. You pay that first before going to town meeting or anything else. So that, you know, it limits what, whether you, one, one way or the other, you just don't have as much money as you would have.
If you do a job, that, that's the tax rate. If you pay it off on your tax return cap. So.
It affects, it affects how much money you have available from taxes, not so much the tax rate. The tax rate's going to be the same. You just don't have as much money to raise and appropriate. As opposed to appropriating the money at town meeting and even taking it from free cash.
So I guess what I'm trying to say is, we go to town meeting, we get everything we want, we spend 40,000, we have 50,000 too, because, you know. So that's the, that's what I'm trying to say. That's what I meant. So if Congress recommends a budget leaving 300,000 on the table, they'll be able to make that 100,000. Now it's only 200,000 left on the table. So that's how.
Or they have to leave 400,000 on the table to make up the difference.
I know we've talked about FEMA reimbursements as well. And I know we've said that that is a long process. Are there items that we think that FEMA would cover where the CARES Act wouldn't? If, if we get rejected from the.
Overtime.
We don't have a lot of that.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I think that the things that have been covered by FEMA were more the emergency things that we had to do right away in the beginning. So overtime for cleaning buildings, for if we had had to set up a medical challenge for testing or, or housing people, that type of thing FEMA is more likely to cover. From everything that I've talked, you know, that occurred, it's not the type of thing that we're getting through CARES Act. It's not the same. You're reaching.
No, I do. It's just, that's the 75% now. Sometimes it takes years to get that back and to even find out if it's going to be covered. So we've, you know, talking to Sandy, we've gone through the care, because this one, even though it's far from a immediate response, although within a month or so, these things are going to be covered where elsewhere. It could be literally years.
Yeah, the stretch, I think maybe that the flexi glass might be covered, but I'm not sure how much. Because FEMA is more like an emergency response type of thing. That was my understanding of it.
Yeah, no way.
One of my questions, how long, so a lot of items that we've got Sandy invoices for and we're cutting checks on, like what was the last submission paid for, county, cares?
Well, hopefully it'll be tomorrow.
So tomorrow.
I'm trying to get them together this afternoon for a while.
And the holiday anticipated until we find out that money was.
It may be much.
It'll take a long time.
How long?
When we, Sandy put in the first one, was it middle of June, late June? And we didn't get the check until, was it late August?
I still have two submissions that are.
It just makes, it just makes it so difficult.
I, I, I think I've communicated my frustrations with Tom O'Brien. I mean.
I think they'll have to skip it out to stop me faster, but we have got a lot of time too. But, but, yeah, I still have two submissions I haven't heard from.
Yeah, I mean, we got, we got, you know, a note early this week saying, can you send us the payroll?
Sure.
Yeah, so here the list, you know, and we did it. I mean, Sandy, you know, may have already done it before, but nevertheless, we resubmitted it again. And, you know, it's sort of like you drop it into this black hole and then you wait. There's, I mean, even with the first submission, there was no communication for like six weeks, something like that.
But they tell you if you're strapped, that you're going to lose it. And if you specate, you're at risk of getting reimbursed.
Well, that's my concern about ordering the equipment. Okay, and right now, until there's a check to see whether or not they're going to cover.
But by the way they own, we might not even know that sometime in November.
Well, I, no, you take it into pieces. Look, I think Tom's been fairly frank with me about which things he thinks are reimbursable and which are questionable and which are no. So for instance, I wanted the sidewalk project. To me, because that was, that would have been funded from the state, but it was all to do with COVID. The state didn't have that program unless COVID had happened. They wanted to promote outdoor activities. Okay, great, done. Okay, I think it's qualified. Nope, sorry, not happening. So I'm not even submitting it. We didn't spend the money, obviously, but I'm not even, you know, it's not happening. And there are going to be other things on that list that we're going to get no's from. It's the ones that are, show me the documentation. So for, you know, I'm not picking on Gene because I think it's a perfect example of what should be reimbursable. They want book carts for the library so they could quarantine the books in essence. It's like when, you know, people were quarantining their groceries. That, okay, they're still following that protocol. What Sandy and I said to Gene was Plymouth wants to see something. Did you set a policy back in the beginning that said, we're, you're going to quarantine the books? Books come in the, put in the book drop, we're going to let them sit for two weeks, not two weeks, two days. And then, but, but we need a cart or truck, whatever, to house those books, to contain those books for those two days. While we put another truck into the book drop to, you know, cycle it through. Is that the Health Act library policy? Is that the Board of Library commissioners? Show me how this is connected to COVID and is, you only needed it because of COVID, not because of some other thing that you are trying to do. And show me that it's only going to be used for COVID-related things. I mean, I don't know, you know, a year from now, are they going to need the book trucks? Probably not, one hopes. But certainly for the immediate future and into 2021, the way things are going, they're going to need it. You know, I know it was one of you or somebody else mentioned LED science restos.
Yeah.
Yeah, probably not. I mean, yeah, we can get information out. And yeah, maybe there's another community that got the money, but the pushback I'm getting from Tom is, no, you need to really show a clear connection between what you're purchasing and what, and that it was COVID-related and it's not going to primarily be used for something else. So, I mean, Scott and Bert have made an excellent case for these pieces of equipment. But, but they're in the grayer category right now in my mind. And until, you know, we're, we're at risk, just as we are for the, for the workover at the school. I mean, that was $50,000. We're going to be at risk for that until we see a check. I think we can make a strong case for what we did. And we had to do it even if we weren't going to get reimbursed. The problem that we would have had with Group 106, the Plymouth Street, we hadn't had the additional space was sufficient so that we needed to do anyhow whether we're reimbursed. to anyhow whether we were reimbursed. And we were only doing it because of COVID. If we had, you know, and so, and that's our story, and we're sticking to it. The only reason we did that was because we were going to get more parents with more kids driving their kids to school under these circumstances, not putting them on the bus. And the only, so the only reason we did that was because of COVID. We'll see whether we get reimbursed. Um, so, but, so the question really is, do we wait even to Monday? You know, the board, the board could say, for instance, to me, Charlie, if you get, you know, when and if Tom O'Brien or Plymouth County says yes, then you press the go button with Scott and with Bert and say, yes, buy this stuff. So they don't have to wait three days, four days, whatever it is, to get a response from the board. That'd be one way of handling this.
So could we approve the definite fogging and?
Well, yeah, well, I've already basically said, yes, buy, go, done.
But, but your question is more the truck?
Yeah, the truck and the trailer.
Yeah, true.
Um, we can do the same thing. We can approve that contingent upon getting some indication that it would be covered.
Yeah.
A reasonable indication that it would be covered.
Reluctantly second, I'm, I'm not too sure about this. I'll second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
You name it.
Chief, anything else? Okay. Anything else? From schools or anything?
Just the only other thing would be the cost of actually the repairs of the units.
You mean the things that are already there right now?
Yeah. So the, the work that Cuddy Johnson's doing, I'm assuming the old, so it's, it's really the older part of the building that, that was failing after they worked on the units in the back and the bottom or the top floor. They think that they have those units except for one room where the exhaust fan is not working correctly, and they're trying to troubleshoot that.
And that's going to be in the gray category because it's pre-existing stuff that we should have been maintaining and didn't. And this doesn't mean we shouldn't do it.
It just means we may not get reimbursed.
So Alex Mead said that he thinks the reason why that those units really are so bad, and Matt agreed, was that during the whole construction phase, we didn't have the covers of those. So he said all those coils.
Got covered with.
Junk from the construction debris for the last, you know, so many years that it happened there. So he thinks that they can bring those units. His professional opinion was they could bring those units back to, within specification, although there might be one or two units that have to totally be replaced.
Get a cost on there?
He doesn't. He, Alex didn't have a cost, but he, he said that the problem is that to replace a unit, nobody stocks the actual units. They might stock coils, but they don't stock a, the unit. It would be two to three months before you can get a replacement unit.
We don't have AC in that section of the building.
The, so the only rooms that I'm aware that have AC is the cafeteria, which is the old gym, and the music room has an AC.
So when you say coils, we're.
The coils in the univents. The way it was explained to me is when they did the work on the building, all those bent covers on the outside, they were taken off. They were put back on when the building was handed back.
It's really the impellers of the fans in it.
Yeah.
When you say coils, you're thinking about AC cords in that sense, is what I think.
So basically, it sounds like they all need to be blown out and scrubbed out and they should be.
And the ductwork, you know.
Yeah.
Well, it needs to be done if you're going to have kids or anybody in the school in there, those rooms.
But the, I have no, I have no dollar figure for that.
Well, we're going to have to wait until we get something.
No, I apologize, but I have an injection scheduled at two forty-five, so I need to leave.
Pop, slide.
All right. Um, we're, we can, Corin, we're going to try for Tuesday. If tonight doesn't work out, I'm aiming for Tuesday.
Tuesday at Kingston again?
No, Kingston, here.
In the two rooms?
If necessary. Because you'll, Tuesday's agenda for the cycle will include whether you want to reduce quorum. We've checked, we've checked with the AG's office and it's allowed. You can't do it in the middle of the actual meeting itself, but in between sessions, they're saying it's legit to change the quorum.
Okay, so it would be Tuesday.
There.
At the gym.
Yes.
Okay. Did we communicate that with the school?
Yeah, I've been in touch with everybody there.
Okay.
I mean, I haven't said definitely Tuesday. I want to talk to you and ultimately, yeah, I understand. Ultimately, on Thursday, um, you know, tonight, somebody have to make a motion and go to Tuesday. But that's the, that's the game plan.
Okay. And, uh, do we have, are we, the board, just at seven thirty?
No, I'm going to want you to start at six if possible.
Six there.
Six here. Do a regular, do a sort of semi-regular meeting.
Okay.
Maybe next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday.
Not, I meant tonight.
Oh, no, we're just hoping for seven thirty. We're going at seven thirty, that's it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Take care.
All right. Do you want to move on to, uh, any issues? Well, um, yeah, so for the meetings, I've been in touch with Larry, with staff at the school, with Barbara and with Dennis, and the game plan would be is if we don't get quorum tonight, or if we don't conclude our work tonight at the Kingston Collection, is to continue the meeting to Tuesday at seven thirty at the elementary school. We are allowed, if the board votes earlier on Tuesday, that's one of the reasons to have a separate selectance meeting here, and then you can go over to the school. Um, and to start at six rather than six thirty, if that's okay. Um, I have to move two agenda appointments, but I think it's doable. Um, but you could make a decision whether you want to lower the quorum.
That, that all really dependent upon what happens tonight.
Right, yeah.
I spoke to a lot of people over the last few days, and a lot of people said they're going to show something, we'll say.
They're going to show up?
That's what he said.
Okay. Okay, well, but they do, that's one less.
I told him, I told him because since we're next to the theater, there would be popcorn and candy.
I'm not sure that they're allowed to sell concessions. Um, I don't have anything else. We are having East West do just the audio system. Um, we just didn't have enough PA equipment between the schools and ourselves to handle that room. So I had a, I'm having them do another, and I have, and they're on, they're on, they're waiting for my call about next Tuesday if we need them across the street. Because we'll need something there. We may need both rooms. If we need both rooms, we need them. So we need them to set up.
Well, we have to be prepared for both rooms.
Well, that's exactly it. Yeah.
As far as that goes, I thought they did a pretty nice job. I, I think it's as good as we could have expected over there. It wasn't cheap, but.
No.
It was, it was at least done.
I mean, the biggest challenge is, you know, and I'm used to this, because I don't just do town meetings. You know, I was emceeing, you know, shows at the Peel House for a number of years and things like that. People don't know how to use a mic. And so they won't get close enough. They think that they can be far away. They can't. Unless you have an excellent mic pickup, you need to be right at, you know, almost chewing on the mic, almost. So, um, is there anything else you all want to talk about town meeting? We're good so far?
I think I'm good. You good, Fred?
I'm good.
Okay. Um, just officially to notify the board, we had an appeal filed by Gordon C. Andrews on the ZBA decisions, petitions nine twenty-two and nine twenty-four, those were filed in court. I've notified Land Use Council, who will represent the town in this matter until otherwise told to do something else. Um, recycling abatements for twenty twenty-one? Anything out of the ordinary?
Um, not really. Um, number seven, I think that was second page, um, they provided a petition for the private hall, however, but the invoice did say they recycle. Um, nine hundred thousand, I can't get the license from God, all of them, there's always one can't seem to, you know, give my admission to any of them or whatever. So, um, that was about it. And then the last three, I got to season a home, which we've done, um, in the years past. They only pay half.
They're bidding to half.
Yeah, because they did six months ago.
And they verify that their water's only on for half a year, so that, that's reasonable?
I would move, I would move that the list of abatement requests for two twenty, twenty-one be approved.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Um, the board, if it wishes to, can vote to extend the allowance for outdoor table service for on-premise license holders. Um, right now, I believe it's until the end of October, is it? Or is it the end of?
No, again, November first.
Yeah. Um, and it's, the, the board has the option of waiting for the, the restaurant owners to come to the board. I don't see the point in that. I don't, I mean, I would just recommend that you give the blanket extension. They'll have to work with the fire chief and with the building inspector about tents and heaters and all that, but that's their worry to worry about with the departments.
Is Mother Nature going to be involved in that discussion?
I don't, I did not see a signatory for Mother Nature.
Barring catastrophes.
But it's, well, look, Halifax is not Chicago, you know that.
Why, you can get first bill.
You good with this truck?
I'm good.
Yeah, like, you want to make a motion?
I'm good.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, if the board would affirm the contracts with the fire chief and police chief, obviously of funding, the contract is contingent upon town meeting vote either tonight or later on, but we, the board needs to affirm, um, the agreements in public session.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
On Aldana Road, um, I'm still checking with Joan Piers. I'm waiting to hear back whether all the documents that they wanted were sent by Plymouth County. So they're sitting in the green folder waiting for confirmation. At the same time, the sliver, so that what I'm working with Joan really on are the two parcels that the county sold its interest to the town, and then we're preparing to sell to the state. The sliver parcel, where it's the state giving it to the town, that's still sitting in the state legislature. I finally got a list of questions from the House Ways and Means Committee, which was basically saying, did you ever do anything with this parcel during the last twenty years? No. Okay. So I'm hoping that will be enough to move that bill. Um, cemetery internment form, Steve Hayward in his cemetery superintendent hat asked the board, the Board of Cemetery Commissioners, where you're wearing that hat right now, to improve the internment form. It's basically a signature with information on it. I didn't give it to you.
I was going to say.
I was going to say, I don't have a copy of it.
But, but I think I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Just a heads up, traffic safety committee will be meeting on Monday morning to talk about, um, speed limits and engine brakes on Route fifty-eight and a couple of other issues. Maryland's landing update, Chris Winterwitz had written to me early this week. He had film of another truck that seemed to get lost. I sent everything to Marilyn. She very, very properly responded. She provided a map and the rules that the truckers are supposed to be following. So I think they're trying to do their part. Pope's Tavern Roof Project Update, um, we should start having the apple peer of the paper on this Friday. I think two and a half weeks later will be the bid deadline. We'll just try and get the money either tonight or next week. Um, and, and that's it, that's what I've got.
Okay. Unless there's something else that anybody wants to offer up, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody.